May 23rd, 2024. Happy Memorial Day weekend, starting soon. I'm sorry, I know we said we were gonna start at 6:45. Most importantly was the E Course Creek Commission was with us today, as well as some of Wayne County and our county commissioner to discuss what's happening in Wayne County. Meeting went a lot longer, probably would've went a lot longer had we not cut it short. But we thank you guys for, you know, being patient with us. Today's study session is going to be for a moratorium for use, basically used cars, not new cars, car washes, gas stations, tow yards, junkyards.
Collision standards, repair shops.
Business license requirements.
You know, and so on. And I'm gonna have Councilman Saab, if he wants to either go up to the top or if he wants to just sit at his desk, doesn't make a difference, to just kind of talk a little bit about this, why he feels that this is the importance of this. And then we can open it up to discussion. And then we would hear from the public. But I ask, in the meantime, give the councilman the floor. If you have any questions, hold your questions until he's done. Councilman?
Thank you, Council Chair.
Anytime.
So I brought this forward a couple of weeks ago over on the southern side of Dearborn Heights, working on the utility poles, trying to get the utility poles numbered, tagged to be picked up. And a lot of the residents complained that we had most was like, "The city is saturated with gas stations, used car dealerships, collision shops." And I know the Van Borne corridor has their own rules and regulations. Down Beach Daily, everything else, the cars are just stacking. And the only businesses that seem there are coming in front of the commissions are for land use or either car washes, used car dealerships, you know, tow yards, junkyards. And it's too, and we're all, I'm for all new businesses. But my, my situation is that if you're gonna come into the city and do business and you wanna treat the city like a trash can or a trash dump, we don't want you in this. I personally don't want you in the city. And I had put this for 48 months.
Let's use your councilman.
He's like, "Let's do 12 months." And I'm willing to work with the council on it, but I mean, something's gotta be done. Administration had, you go back to meetings for the past couple of years. They've asked for ordinances and resolutions put forward and they renew it every six months, but nothing, nothing has been done. And everything is a standstill. Why? No one knows. But I plan on putting this resolution forward with implementing an ordinance with it because we don't have a master plan. And by us allowing this to continue and continue, it's just any business that comes up empty, this is what it's turning into. And we wanna bring in new business, different business in the cities, developments, industrial, logistics, something different that brings in jobs and the tax capture. And I think just the kind of businesses that, you know, private hedge funds are investing in and it's just, it's not something that we need in the city. And I think that, I think 12 months is fair, even 24 months is fair. To see where we're at, just also ordinance and, and you know, and I've spoke to the director and he was supposed to call me last week, he did it. We're really failing on actually enforcing rules, regulations and ordinances in our city. We're failing dramatically, drastically. And this resolution does not affect any, and I repeat again, does not affect anybody that's already in the process, that's been approved, that's gone through the commissions or in the building department and so on. This is for strictly new incoming business once this is approved. And, and you know, we'll, we'll visit it back in 12 months. The problem is, is that how long has the city been waiting to have a master plan?
That's a great question.
You know, with everything that we're putting up in different spots in the city and nobody looking out or doing anything over these, what kind of master plan are we gonna have? What's gonna be the overall master plan? You know, we wanna have a section that's industrial, we wanna have a sectional that's a downtown authority. A corridor, you know, that's part of the master plan. I think putting a hold on everything right now would actually benefit the city moving forward to see what our, what our versions of the master plans are gonna be. And I'm hoping council will move forward because currently right now, they have all these resolutions in place, but nothing's getting done. Every six months, they're renewing it. Every six months, it gets renewed, but nothing's getting done. We're just adding more and more and more. This puts a stop.
So can I just add on a few things, Councilman, go ahead? Just to keep in mind, moratoriums are not made to be something that just, to just leave there. A moratorium is supposed to be set to eventually see a resolution with the first and second reading. And then you enforce that and then there's a, now some type of ordinance adopted saying, like the city of Detroit did on the, on the, I remember being really young and it was like, used tires shops. And now you're no longer seeing used tire shops across the city of Detroit, but they had to put a control on certain things. I know Councilman Wenzel and former Council Chairman Abdullah are very adamant on, you know, putting a stop in, in councilwoman Minalowski Maxwell was just to say, you know, "We need to stop with the used cars, it doesn't look pretty." And so there's been a moratorium here. And I know most recently that there was a, some type of approval for a used car, but the reality was that this used car dealership was already approved, they just never renewed their license. And then the business holder sent it, sold it to another business owner. So, you know, what really happened was, I'd have to say, I'm so sorry, between the building, maybe the clerk's office, the renewal of licenses, we dropped the ball. You know, I wouldn't, or you, or, but you never.
He never handled it.
Yeah. Even from the, even the old past person? Okay, I thought the, the discussion was that there was.
They just never came in and got it.
Yeah, they just never came in and got it. But it, but it was always established, they were always using it as.
I think they're, I think they're told in building department that that's their last stop to go to the clerk's office and they failed to do that.
Okay. But did they get an approval from the building department in the past?
Yes. I mean, everything, they were set to go, they just didn't do the last step.
Okay. Regardless, I, I mean, I, I agree and I, and I'm, I'm gonna stress on what I'm gonna say here. It just seems like Dearborn Heights, and not just Dearborn Heights, I'm seeing Westland, I'm seeing Canton, I'm seeing Livonia. I'm starting to see a, an establishment of these really big car washes that are just taking over municipalities in different cities. I think Dearborn Heights right now sees itself, "We have enough car washes." So on this moratorium, if you wanted to adopt a resolution for car washes to say, "There's enough", I think almost every corner of the city, you can get a car wash. And if, you know, we were to add another car wash or add another collision shop or add another mechanic shop, I think it's enough. At least I can speak for myself, I can't tell you that that's what the, you know, resolution is or if that's what's gonna be on this moratorium. But at least for myself, I, I don't wanna see Dearborn Heights to be the city of, of car washes or the city of automotives. I know, you know, Henry Ford had this amazing dream, but Dearborn Heights is not Dearborn. Dearborn Heights is a bedroom community. You know, we just sat back and listened to this commission talk about how when the city was, you know, in 1861, in the early, you know, 1861, they said that Dearborn Heights was built on, you know, the south end was built where it was known to be a flooding area. It's, but yet we continue to build these homes, we continue to put people in these homes and now look what's happening. And so what's gonna happen when we continue to establish these like type of car washes or these collision shops or these mechanic shops? I may disagree on, on things like car wash, I mean, on gas stations because I feel like they're convenience stores. But as far as the car wash and, and the whole automotive industry, I think we could take a step back for a little bit. I think 12 months is very good. I know that we've asked for some type of ordinance to go forward, you know, with the administration to write something up because we had a study session on that, right, Madam Clerk?
In February, I believe there was an ordinance to be, be bought and the administration failed again.
You did, you, a study session definitely was requested, but it never happened because then we got into budget season.
Okay.
Right, but before, even this council body, before, it's been asked for multiple times.
It's been.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So an ordinance has been requested. I don't know if it's by, you know, this corp council or the past corp council. I can tell you, I remember.
Yeah.
And we haven't had any type of ordinance.
I think four years the moratorium has been in and out.
Yeah, but that, see, that is since 2019.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so overall, I, I think this is something that we should support. But I think that we need to make sure that we have, you know, we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's and we're not just rushing certain things. That's just kinda how I stand on this.
You know, Council Chair, but also the problem is, is that it seems like certain commissions have been weaponized.
I explained.
So I'm about to use the planning commission. The planning commission is, it's become a weapon. It's for the, either the elites, it's who you know, and it's, and the votes become personal.
I mean, that's here or there.
No, 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 no. I've attended these meetings, I've seen these meetings and, and this is factual. These meeting, the, the commission has become, it's become very personal. These votes are not, you know, there's some votes, some voting members are not being ethical. And it's causing that certain people are getting approved and certain people are given roadblocks. And you know, and just to be fair, just, we should just put a, a stop on everything. And again, the master plan will explain the city, how the city's gonna move forward. Not a commission, not a council. It's gonna, the master plan's gonna, what's gonna move the city forward.
Not a vote of seven, not a vote of nine. It's, the master plan is what will move the city forward.
Let me answer a question. Let me, let me just play devil's advocate here. Let's just say Dave Abdullah owns land in the city of Dearborn Heights, okay? And he bought it 10 years ago. He's been waiting to, you know, he's been saving up money, saving up money, saving up money. And his dream was to build his son a car wash, not a car wash, because I would not. But say he, he, he wants to build a gas station.
Unfortunately, with this and with the way the master plan would be written.
Are we saying that we're not allowed, you're not allowed to build any more gas stations across the entire city?
Right now, for 12 months, yes.
Yeah, but if there's.
Existing car, existing.
I wanna finish. Let's just say we go for the 12 months, right? And I'm okay with the whole 12 months. Let's just say though, we adopt the first and second reading and then we make an ordinance that we say, "No more gas stations." To me, I think that's a terrible idea.
I don't, I think we have plenty of gas stations.
But you're not, you don't know that because somewhere on Van Borne could say, "You know what, we can afford to have another gas station there." Just because Ford Road is filled with it or Michigan Avenue is filled with it doesn't mean Beach Davies is filled with it. And I'm just playing devil's advocate, like I'm trying to like, and mind you, gas stations, I wanna make very clear, gas stations are not automotive. Gas stations are convenience stores. Gas stations are, you're supposed to come in, I wanna get a tile, I wanna get a motion, I wanna pump some gas, get a movie. I mean, look, colorful what it is, I either go to the mobile on Fordham Beach or I go to the gully in BP gas station. But what I'm trying to say is, we cannot say we wanna eliminate all gas stations across the city and then put an ordinance together and say, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, "No more gas stations are allowed to happen." You wanna say no more collision shops, no more car washes, no more tow yards, no more junkyards. I agree, but there's nothing that says gas stations make a city look ugly.
So, so this is not about looking ugly. Again, this is about the city's master plan.
We don't have a master plan.
That's my point.
Council Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you, Council Chair. I had the discussion with Mr. Deeb earlier today. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna have something in front of us. And hopefully, we're gonna have a master plan within like maybe a little bit over, maybe a year, year and a half at the most. But to be honest with you, I'm saying right here, right now, we're still discussing the same stuff we discussed on Tuesday. I was hoping to have some actual data I can look at. You're talking about gas stations, you're talking about the dealerships. How many gas stations do we have in the city? How many dealership do we have in the city? Does, do we have an ordinance that says like within two businesses, you're not supposed to have another business, the same? I mean, for me to make a decision, I need some data. I don't see the building department here, I don't see the ordinance department here. Anybody brought some data? Is it just whatever we thinking right now or do we have some data so we can make a decision?
The data is the residents too, they get into consideration.
Well, you're talking, okay, you, I mean, I don't know, I don't know. How many car washes in the south end?
I tell you, we got a lot.
How many car washes in the north end?
Mr., you know what, we got a bunch, a few car wash owners here. Can you guys speak up on that?
So are we supposed to get the data from the residents? What about our administration? I mean, this is, come on, come on.
Hakeem Fakouri, One West Lane, Dearborn. Here on behalf of Tony's Car Wash. I think you have phenomenal questions, but typically the process on a moratorium is, there's concern from council members because of feedback from the residents that there's an oversaturation of one industry or another. And what usually happens is the council agrees, puts a moratorium, which pumps the brakes on any applications. But it also requests a study. So you get the feedback and the study is done by an outside company that does an overview, which works hand in hand with the final master plan. And that company comes and says, "For your population, you have 10 car washes. The normal city for that population has three." So you use that feedback to hone down on what industries you wanna stop and what industries you want to continue to grow. If Council Chair says, "You're deficient in gas stations," he might be 100% right. We don't know, but usually a study is done.
For what the gentleman's saying is, the moratorium is not saying you're not allowed to have anything. It's saying, "Hold up for 12 months, let us run a study."
That's exactly what we're doing with the master plan.
Yeah, but the, the master plan is not telling us how many gas stations we have.
They got a master plan.
No.
The master plan is something that the result, the studies will help you deliver the proper master plan. It's based on the population and what the growth is gonna be. You're at 63,000 residents in Dearborn, in Dearborn Heights. You have 10 car washes. Dearborn has 108,000, has five car washes. Those are examples that you can use and those are the data that you should have.
That's what I'm looking for. I was expecting that from the administration to have it for us.
This way you can tell a resident in the face that we've done our homework and what we've done is what's best for the city. And, and so I agree with what you're saying, but the moratorium.
Like a person like me, if I live on the north end, I'm not gonna go ahead and drive all the way to the south end to wash my car. Same thing, somebody lives in the south end, they're not gonna drive all the way to the north end to wash their car. All I'm looking for, I'm asking for, I'm not against this or I'm with or at the moment, I'm asking for just some data. And I was expecting some data today. I'm really shocked there's, we're still like arguing within each other with no data.
Well, but look, we're here as bystanders and all I'm saying is that the, the moratorium concept is basically saying, "He believes there's a concern." If you guys allow him the ability to follow through, it should be attached in the resolution that a study would come out or you put an RFP out for a study within 90 days and then that information comes back and then you, you come back and reconvene. And then the city attorney will go through everything in that, in that, and of course, the city administration. But all this is just, there's a protocol and there's steps that are to be taken. But the first step is, the moratorium has to go in place. Whether it's 12 months, which I think is, is really short because I don't know how long a study takes anymore. But it's been done before in other cities, moratoriums have been done. But they're always connected with a study to make sure that the council is doing what's right for the city.
Thank you, sir.
Council Chair. Well, hang on, I'm gonna hear from Councilman Consonant, Mr. Deeb. Unless you wanna go, Mr. Deeb, go first. Please, Mr. Deeb, go first. He's our expert.
Council Chair, in addition to Mr. Fakhuri said, let me just take two, two comments. The master plan is the right venue to, to, to look at the saturation of any industry in any particular area in the city. Because if we are going to treat each one, what about hook allowances? What about other things that you might think that we exceeded the?
We did a hook allowance, a moratorium, and they lost that.
But so, so instead of addressing each industry separately and coming up with an overlay, so now I have a Van Borne overlay. I'm the one who actually does the review for Planning Commission. So I'm looking at, I, I go by my mess, my, my zoning ordinance. Now, this is the actual ordinance, this is your law that you put on the website for any developer and any designer to, to look when they come to Dearborn Heights. And if I'm an engineering firm out of Lansing, if I come to Dearborn Heights, the first thing, if I have a client, the first thing I do is go online and pull the ordinances out and, and design my facility based on this. My job is to review it and tell the Planning Commission what the ordinance is as it relates to what the project. And then give them the options, you know, but, but this is the, this is what I follow. So when we did, when we did the Van Borne overlay, it was an overlay just limited to that one area. So what I would do is if a facility is being built in that particular location, whatever the industry is, I will go, I will follow this zoning overlay. And if we have any order, any ordinances that you passed, it gets, once it gets passed, like you did with Van Borne, then we, we upload it to MUNIS code and then it becomes part of this. So my suggestion, I guess, in this whole thing, about the master plan is the right venue to go. Master plan initially.
Can I stop you for a second on the master plan? Don't get mad, I have to give you the, I have to give you that constructive criticism, but I'm being honest. You guys have been promising us this master plan for four years.
I haven't been with the city for four years, so it's like, you know.
Three and a half.
We've already had it two and a half.
But even before you first came on, I mean.
Well, we didn't have Mr. Deeb.
We did have Mr. Deeb, we had Mr. Deeb when I first started.
Can I?
Yeah, three and a half years ago.
Okay, all right. So we went out to bid last year and we put an RFP out. And I explained to you before, because of the funding, what you did is you put 300, I believe 310,000 in our prior year budget to fund the master plan. That's nowhere near enough. We were seeking funding, grant funding for the master plan, that's nowhere near enough. So we've got some preliminary approval, but it came with a condition. RFPs cannot be used, you have to do qualification based. We did that. So I have a RFQ on the street for all the, all the projects that we have on the master plan and all the capital improvement. Now, capital improvement is a byproduct of your master plan. All these projects require a whole bunch of architects and engineers, all to be solicited based on qualification to get the grant money. So that's what we have on the street, it's due on the 29th. So yesterday, we had in this room, we had the pre-bid and a whole bunch of people. We attract a lot of people. So that the, you will have before you, by the 29th, we will have a selection of architects and engineers, one of them, so things like the, the fire station, things like the capital improvement. The master plan will be probably the first thing to be awarded. So we will have a list of consultants based on qualifications selected and you'll have a chance to approve them and they, and they will be assigned these tasks. The master plan is one of them. That's the way I'm doing it because that guarantees me getting the, the grant money for all of these projects. So that, that's the, so we expect that to be up and running very shortly. Now, the entire process, including interviews and public hearings, stakeholders, what I'm not doing is the 2007 update. We can't do an update on a master plan that is beyond that. So we're doing a whole new master plan. We are working with other communities related from, we're part, and you know that, part of the corridor Detroit to Ann Arbor. So we're part of that, even though Michigan Avenue corridor is a small section in Dearborn Heights. But we are working with other communities so that it is a seamless interchange. We'll give you some of these ideas of what we intend, what we like to see. And then this is, you know, a presentation, you, everybody gets to have an input. So we're looking at the entire tax base and what the city's visioned for the next 20 years. And based on that, we will put the five-year capital to get us to where we need to be. So master plan is on the road, it's, it's out to bid. The, you know, qualification base will be done next week and it will be presented to you. It will be up, you know, so it's probably gonna take a year, a little over a year, but it will be, it will be done. So when it comes back to this, my, my recommendation, and it's up to you, you can do whatever, continue adding moratoriums without a big vision. Like I'm looking at the current master plan. My historic district, my downtown is Warren Avenue. I don't know who came up with this, but that's not what we did. That's not my downtown area, but that's what I have.
So you agree with the moratorium?
Um.
What does the administration want?
I can't speak for, I'm speaking for myself.
I know, I wanna know, because the mayor's not here, but what, what does the administration ultimately say you want? Because I'm hearing, you know, a couple of.
I, I rather, I rather have the master plan first.
Chief of Staff is here. Can you, do you know what, what the mayor, you know, the mayor of the city would want?
Master plan.
I know, so does you, I know, but does he prefer a moratorium here right now or no? Nobody knows, can you call them?
Council Chair, I have a, I just.
Well, hang on. Roger, do you know what the mayor, do you know what the mayor wants? Do you know if he wants it or not? What would you be the recommendation? I know you're his attorney and.
Not his attorney, our attorney. But in any case, you know, I, I like, I talked to Rick Watlin today when you, when we were asking.
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is. I talked to Rick Watlin today. I think the, you guys approved the Van Borne corridor just a few months ago, which is in, with Allen, is it Allen Park, sorry, Taylor, right? Both together, right?
Taylor.
That took about four years to get to, they approved it two years before us. So you've gotta look at the overall picture, not.
Roger, swing. Right now.
So in terms of answering what the mayor.
Roger, my question to you is, you right now, give the recommendation. Do you want a moratorium as, would the mayor would like a moratorium or not?
This is one of yes and no questions that I can't answer.
Man, I just wanna know.
Because I don't know.
You don't want a moratorium?
He doesn't know.
Who doesn't know?
The mayor, because we, we haven't looked at the overall, we haven't put together a master plan.
The mayor feel like there are too many car wash, collision shops, mechanic shops, used car shops.
You don't have, you don't have any evidence to support, as was stated earlier, where the gas stations, where the car washes, where the things would locate, what the need is in each area of the city, there's been no data produced. How can we make a decision if we don't have?
Council Chair.
Well, you know, you know, one, one second. You know what the moratorium is telling you? Hold off for a second, everybody relax. No more, no more of these mechanic collision, gas station, I'm against the whole gas station thing, but.
Okay, why are you against something? Okay, I'm against.
Well, I'm just speaking for myself.
I know, I know. But I'm saying, you can't just.
We need. Well, well, because a gas station.
If somebody picks one business out of the seven, then we're back to square one.
No more.
Yeah, we don't pick.
No more sports. Then we should put a hold on all businesses for the next 12 months. But go ahead, Madam.
Council Chair. Council Chair, the word.
Has it promoted, the session?
Yes.
Um, my thoughts are, is the moratorium puts everything temporarily on hold. It's not permanent until we get the master plan and can figure out where we need or we don't need.
More pressure.
You know, it's only temporary.
No, 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 there's no ordinance being created.
Yeah, until we have the master plan.
I think the master, I think we need it temporarily until the master plan comes forward. And if it comes forward sooner, I would, you know, look at taking and getting rid of the moratorium.
But my thing was to the Councilman Saab is, 48 months of a moratorium is too much.
Council Chair, like I said, the Van Borne corridor took on five years.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's one thing. But I'm allowed to go to the Councilman Consonant first.
Mr. Deeb.
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is. Mr. Deeb?
Mr. Deeb.
Mr. Deeb?
Alec.
Mr. James. You gotta get your back up there. So what I hear you saying is that long-term, what, it's, it's the way the area is zoned. So people have to comply with the zoning ordinance. If, if in a particular area, like let's say Van Borne, you wanna zone out car washes and that, we, we have a study, we enact that and then that'll hold up in court. But a moratorium is, is a temporary.
Hold.
Hold. And it's, it's usually just, like I know Detroit, they allowed marijuana dispensaries and they had them every other block, so they had a moratorium on any new licenses and then they had to have people from within the city and so on and so forth. Go ahead, did you? So, so the idea is not to do a hodgepodge and not to pick winners and losers, but to say, "Okay, we've done a study, our city's got 200 car washes in the city and, you know, that's too much. So based on that, we will only have or we'll, we'll zone out car washes." Another example is adult businesses. There's, there's ways that you can, you don't just, you can't just ban them. You have to have tier zoning and you can zone them out. But go ahead, you wanna.
So in addition, Councilman, in addition to what you said, part of what the, so if you look at the zoning map, it will give you zoning classifications. It will give you zoning classifications. Part of the master plan is to look at the zoning classifications. Are they still valid? Is that area commercial? Is it, is it residential? Is it a mixed use? Is it, you know, industrial? That's all going to be part of the master plan. We are going to look at everything. So the map that's in this book, the map we have on the wall outside, which shows all of our zoning. So some of these uses and a lot of the stuff that goes before the planning commission, if it is a special use. If you're putting a car wash in a C2 and it is a special use, it's special use. If it is permitted in that ban, then it's a done deal. They go pull a permit and build it. It's permitted. If it's special land use, then it goes before, and then the special land use have different classifications. What do you need to look for? Is it feasible? Is it close to residential? Whole bunch of stuff. So these are the things that we're going to look at from the start. I mean, we're going to, we're going to look at everything. As part of the master plan, we may have, and I believe we will have, to adjust some of our zones because they're just outdated. If you remember about a year ago, we took a section of commercial-
Can he talk? Go ahead.
It's about what he's talking about.
Let him finish in that.
But they are all going to be part, so-
Right, right.
So it's all going to be looked at because we have some areas that, that, you know, we don't have industrial, right? There is no classification. But, but part of that corridor on Michigan Avenue, we were, we're looking for, for, for tax base. We were looking for some incentive. I wanted to have, so when I look at my master plan or my zoning, I don't have that. Dearborn does. So I'm, I'm losing out on these. See, if you have areas that you can designate and give, you know, incentives to businesses to, to attract them. Well, that's, 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 that's good for us because I can augment my tax base and use, you know, use that money for the stuff that we're constantly in need of. So, I mean, these are the things that you look at as part of the master plan. And it just disturbed me when I joined the city that. We haven't looked at it since, last update was 2007. That's what I have on the, on our city website today. 2007, that's way too, and that was an update, not a new master plan. So it is, it is, all of it is needed. And again, if you wanted to look at and ban some industries, whether it's marijuana shops, adult stores, I'm not, you know. This is all going to be on the table, you know, and look at it.
Let's say electric car, battery-
Now, the gas station, I have to agree with the Council Chair on the gas station business. You know, part of what we're looking at, you know, some cities are looking for incentives for the, the hydrogen fueling for the cars. So if I ban gas stations, well, you know, I'm not going to put any hydrogen stations-
The definition is gas. Those aren't gas.
You don't consider that gas? Well, it's a fuel.
They're not considered gas stations.
Okay. Well, fuel, it's a fuel. All right. Okay. Now we're not going to, all right. It's not a gas station.
But I will tell you though, I know a buddy of mine that's building a state-of-the-art oil change in Westland. I mean, it's absolutely stunning. And he's building it from ground up and he's putting EV, those charge stations.
Yeah, yeah.
But what I'm trying to say is-
So Dearborn, Dearborn did that, Council Chair, and, and they built the first one.
But what I'm trying to say is it doesn't have to be at a gas station.
No, no, I know.
Any type of new type of-
I didn't say gas station, but fueling station. So they have natural gas station.
Correct, correct. I get what you're saying.
I filled natural gas in a car in Dearborn, on Allen Road in Greenfield. It's there. You can go use your credit card and fill it up today. So they do have, I just wanted us to be open for the next, you know, get this thing on the road. Start looking at the master plan and then change our zoning map.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If that's okay, Councilman Conson.
It's okay.
You, as a city engineer, I'm speaking as the mayor.
Okay.
Speaking for anyone else, you, how do you feel about this?
I would rather do it through the master plan, not through-
So you're saying you want us to wait a year and a half before making any more decisions?
Year, year and a half.
Which could potentially be two or three or even four or five because you don't know.
No, I don't think it's going to take four or five.
It's going to take a year. It's been, it's been two years. And now we're seeing another year. I'm just giving you the gist of things, Mr. Deeb.
Yeah, I agree.
And we don't know if it's a year. It could be another two years. It can be, we don't know. And in two years, when we did all of this, if she finished the master plan, it'd be another year on top of that.
Okay, so what is the moratorium going to do for us?
The moratorium is saying, put a hold for a second. We have too many, I mean, this, a moratorium, this moratorium has been since- 12/10 of 2019 was the first meeting day and the start date was 12/11 of 2019. And, and it went all the way down to July 1st of 2024.
Which one is that?
This, this moratorium on used cars started on December 11th.
Right.
December 11th of 2019.
And it was extended constantly.
And it's been extended until, and it goes until July 1st of 2024, which we have to go ahead and do again. Because we don't have any type of resolution or ordinance before us. So it's like, to me, there's not much work being done. Really isn't. Obviously, I can tell you right now, at least I can speak for myself, for probably most of the councilmen. It seems like Councilman Saab, Councilman Wenzel, Councilwoman Minowski Maxwell. We don't, we don't want any more used cars. Used, we didn't say new. LaFontaine's more than welcome to come in here. But we don't want any more used car lots in here. We don't want to see cars stacking on top of them anymore. Enough's enough. And it seems like they really, they took advantage of the south end. Yeah.
Council Chair.
So, so Darryl Jameson, the owner of-
You'll be next.
Former towing company, he passed away. That's been taken over by a new company. So if we, if whoever comes in and wants to take that, that tow yard and fix it up and, and, you know, whatever, let's say it's Great Lakes Towing.
Right.
They're not going to be able to do that if we-
Yes, they are. It's an existing business.
But he's, so, so what location? Are they in the, in the Van Born overlay? Then we'll have to follow Van Born overlay.
Yeah, it's, it's west of Telegraph. Their yard is, J&amp;M's yard is west of Telegraph.
But they can get permits and everything.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's, J&amp;M's yard is west of Telegraph.
Oh, west of Telegraph. So it's not on Van Born. It's not in that district.
It's not in the-
It's not in Van Born.
It's on Currier Street, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Before anything, Councilman Wenzel was next.
Thank you. Well, regardless of what you think about this resolution, it doesn't mean anything unless it's an ordinance. Because we could pass this resolution to put a moratorium. As soon as someone's buddy wants to open something up, it'll pass and they'll open it up, you know? I mean, you got to have an ordinance, just like the Van Born overlay. Now, that's an ordinance. We have to follow, that's a law. This is just, you can't do it until we decide maybe you can, you know, let somebody we know open something up or something. So the resolution's nice. It needs some tweaking, but a resolution and a moratorium doesn't mean anything unless it's an ordinance. Because you can do anything you want. We could set a moratorium for 20 years. And next month, someone come to city council and put something, we vote yes. You know, I'll vote no. Then they pass this, we'll open up this shop, you know? Doesn't mean anything. So I mean, I don't, I'm, what are we doing here? We don't have any details, what we're supposed to be studying, like Councilman Ahmed said. We're wasting our time right here, right now. I mean, we're talking about it, but we don't have any of the facts. I mean, that's what we need, we need facts. Because what are we talking? Talking over each other, you know, listening to the same. The only thing we have right now is the Van Born overlay ordinance. That's the only thing we've got that dictates anything on, in that area.
Council Chair.
Hang on one second. It's going to go to Councilwoman Minowski Maxwell first.
Well, I guess the best thing that can happen is the master plan. It will help even new businesses coming to the city. Because I know some business owners don't do a study of their own.
Right.
And if the market gets saturated, we might end up with vacant buildings. And it's not good for the business owner either.
I agree.
It's a win-win for everybody if we know what areas need what and what's got, you know, if there's too much of this at one end, we might need to do it in a different section.
I, I agree with you, Councilwoman, but, but if I may add, I think Councilman Ahmed and I had that discussion today. You know, we used to have, we used to have a requirement that special land use used to be, have to have final approval by council. I don't know when it was taken out before my time, but, but I think it's, it's-
It was never taken out.
Well, if it was, I, I believe it's a good thing, but it's up to you. You can bring it back. You have the power to bring it back.
Show me when.
I, I, I'm, I'm just saying that, if, if you go out today and you're a businessman-
Nothing from the audience.
If you go out today and apply for, for a permit, if, if your type of business is in the zoning area that is permitted use. You just pull the permit and start construction. If it is a special land use, so you've got prohibited, it's out. You have permitted and you go ahead and build it. Or you have special land use. Special land use is the one we go and do the study, present it to the, to the planning commission. If you want that, then you can say, okay, planning commission make the recommendation that comes back to you. This way you get this special land use.
You know, we passed that resolution. We passed a resolution on that.
Why can't we?
You passed it, the councilman must get put there on, on the table. That resolution passed, guys.
I, I talked to Councilman Muskett and-
Yes, yes, yes.
I have to look at the code, but it may still be-
I don't think that's the case.
We voted on that.
I asked him. I asked him. I asked Councilwoman, no, that's, that's not.
Then can you pull that one up for me and just look into it for me?
Okay.
These guys.
I asked him.
The resolution to bring back special land use to the council?
No, no, no. We never voted on it.
We did. We voted on that. We talked, we're going to have a study on it.
We didn't, it didn't-
Madam Clerk, I don't know if you recall, but I remember that passing, by the way.
Council Chair of Bala said he didn't want that with the body.
It wasn't passed.
It didn't pass?
It's not, it didn't pass. I asked Council-
Council Chair of Bala, I remember him saying he didn't want this body to have that responsibility.
I think, I think Gary may have told us that we could be subject to lawsuits and that's what had originally happened.
I think you're right, Council Chair.
Council Chair, Council Chair, we did do a legal opinion on it.
This, Council Chair? Well, I, I believe we're going to Councilman Conson first, then Councilman Saab and then you.
Why wasn't done? You let her start talking.
Okay, well, actually, what is it talking?
I won't either. Let him go ahead.
No, I'm just, I just had an idea. I mean, not that this is the idea of solve this problem. I mean, is there a way and we could, okay, but can we like pass an ordinance like immediately to put a more, you know, hold on this for nine months or six months? And then you could change the ordinance in six months, you know? And can we do something like that? Is that feasible to make it an ordinance? No, you can change ordinances.
You can change ordinances, but you'd have to go through first and second ratings. But you can't say, I want to put this ordinance here, then we're going to change this ordinance again in six months. So that's what, that's what the entire moratorium is. I think first and foremost, we need to have an ordinance for our used car lots that we've been buying since 12/10 of 2019.
What, what Councilman Saab is doing here is, is a good thing. And it does need some, some kind of tweaking or something. It's a little, there's some, you know, vague part. But I know he's got some ideas about providing an ordinance, presenting with an ordinance. But, I mean, if, if the thing is to stop right now these certain businesses or whatever, you know, maybe you can, and there's no way to do it unless you do an ordinance. Because you can put moratoriums on it all you want, you know? You can put a moratorium on anything. It doesn't mean anything unless it's an ordinance. So, I mean, if, we're wasting our time unless we're going to make this an ordinance.
I disagree with you, Councilman, because you did a moratorium here since 12/10 of 2019.
But we granted a license a couple of months ago to someone that never had a license.
Can I finish, please?
No, I'm saying, no.
Can I finish?
Yeah.
What you, what, you know, and just give me the floor for a second. What's driving me crazy is, Councilman, is you're failing to realize that we made an exception because this person went through building department, got their approval and just failed to pay for, which mind you, all they had to do was go here. Lynn, here's your $150, and she was going to give them that license eight, nine, 10 years ago. And what happened was, they operated, we failed because ordinance didn't, we don't have some type of ordinance that says, go check up and make sure every single business is up to light, up to code. You know, when you get a health department, when you go to the health department and you own a restaurant, they reach out to you and say, your license is up for renewal. And if you are operating without a health license, guess what? It's an immediate shutdown. We as this entire city from the past have failed to do so because this business was able to open before you got on council.
You think that guy knew he didn't have a license?
That's-
So he was operating without a license and he knew it, so we're rewarding him.
No, no, but the new business owner that purchased it from him was under the impression that this guy was-
Make exceptions though. It's the rules. The rules are the rules. You can't make exceptions to anybody.
Since 2000, since 2019, you've not had another one ever since.
Used cars, we've had two.
Yeah, heck yeah. And recently?
Yeah.
Yeah, because since I've been on council, there's only been one.
On Roosevelt, Van Born. Yep.
It was a car detailing place.
Detailing.
So why has, why is ordinance not holding it up upon, that's not the council thing.
It's not an ordinance.
And McKinley.
It was a auto place and that came to council and it turned into-
Because it's not an ordinance. It's a moratorium.
But, but you're not understanding.
No, no.
Since I've been on council, Councilman, since I've been on council for the last-
It's not an ordinance, Ross.
You've not, no, it's not because, how about this, if there was a resolution, if there was an ordinance put in place and this guy came before us with the attorney, with Roger bringing the information that he brought in, the same exact thing was still going to happen. Regardless if it was a moratorium or a resolution, it was still going to happen.
We let two used car lots-
No, I've only been on here with one. You brought one that was a renewal, that you said, I want to check up on them to see if they fixed up their stuff.
This was like three years ago, two years ago.
Council Chair, there were, there were time periods where that moratorium was not in effect.
So what, is it because it wasn't renewed?
What's that?
The moratorium had lapsed and they didn't renew it.
Yeah, if it was an ordinance, it wouldn't have had a renewed.
So there was a time period that could have been granted during that.
She said while that was approved, the moratorium was relaxed and it was, there wasn't even an-
I don't know about that one, but I just know that the moratorium at times was not in effect. Because it was defeated.
The one on Roosevelt, we opened up a detail shop and then city council, I voted no. They wanted to start selling cars there.
I've not voted for one brand new-
Oh yeah, the people came in here, two, two women that lived on that street, you were on the city council, and they said, we like this guy. He's, he's keeping his yard up really nicely, which he doesn't. It's, it looks like the grass is so tall. And it talked to everyone in that-
Can you pull that one up for me to see if I was on council? I don't recall this.
I will find out. And then I voted no on it.
He said that there was two ladies that showed up here to approve it. I don't remember that at all.
I do. They lived right on Roosevelt Street.
By the way, I couldn't speak about them because I wouldn't even know how their loan looks based off of Roosevelt Street. So I wasn't here.
Talking about what was, when jammed years ago.
Right, you remember that.
Tanya? Are you talking about what was, what was windjammed years ago?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
And those two women came and they said, we'd rather have that than some other night.
Good news is, I wasn't on council. So, yeah.
Roosevelt.
But regardless, the point is, the simple moratorium, it doesn't do anything. We got to get some kind of ordinance.
I agree. We can start off with an ordinance, which we've requested many times. I mean, I, I mean, even before I got on council, 2019, if you guys didn't request an ordinance, then Councilman, you're just as at fault than anybody else for not requesting it.
I have. I've, I've asked Rogers several times to start an ordinance. I have, in the past.
Everything you guys have asked, I forwarded it to David Vella. I did an opinion letter on the issue of the zoning, of, sorry, of the, of bringing back the zoning to planning commission versus, and it is 2007. I put the Civic Plus documentation. I've done all that you've asked for. If you want me to revisit it and resend it to you, I will pull it up and resend it.
I don't think we've ever got it. You sent it to the council chair at that time?
You gave him an ordinance?
I sent you, I, I reviewed the used car because we were looking at the six-month moratorium. I did the full ordinance for the, 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 the thing that we're talking about, the used car. I prepared it to him. I will look at it, send it to you. I sent the opinion letter to Lisenya as well as to you guys on the issue of zoning board, planning commission versus city, um, city council, when that was changed in 2007. And again, I, I prepared them and the planning commission approved the, the food truck ordinance that, that has been around since 2018 that David Vella asked me to do. The minutes are ready for you to look at and, and documentation. Anything you ask me to do, I have prepared. I will resend it and pull it up.
You said you sent them to the Councilman for-
I, I believe did, yes. And I sent, for the issue, I sent to Ray Muskett and the other thing on the opinion letters. I will pull it back up again and I did study.
And I don't, I don't mean to be cocky or rude, but I'm just, to be blunt, since January 9th, neither of those council members have been here.
I have not been asked since January 9th. When I was asked to do it, like back in February and March, I prepared them. I submitted them. May, I submitted them. Everything you've asked me to do has been provided. Nothing since January 9th. You're correct.
I'm going to let the Councilman Saab go because then I'll go back.
I, I completely agree with Tom, Councilman Wenzel. I mean, this is a start. If they agree to this, I'm, I'm willing to put a resolution and we'll personally get the resolution.
Ordinance, ordinance.
Or ordinance, I'm sorry. Get an ordinance written because it's going to take another two and a half years before we see anything. Administration promises and never delivers. It's, it's the honest truth.
Councilwoman?
Can we do a resolution toward ordinance?
We start off with a resolution to haul everything and write the ordinance. The ordinance can't be done overnight.
Yeah, well, give us time to write the ordinance.
That's the whole purpose of this.
And have the resolution holding till then.
That's the whole purpose of this.
We do that?
What Councilman Saab has been saying.
Well, we should do something like that.
That's what the moratorium is.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Can we do one to the other?
That's exactly what I'm doing.
We can ask the city attorney to write an ordinance.
I'm willing to pay for it from an outside attorney because it will not get done through the city.
Council Chair.
Thank you.
Hang on one second. I'm going to go to Councilman Conson and then Councilman, nothing from the public just yet, please. Thank you.
Council Chair, what I'm saying is we can't do this half-hersely. And I'll give you an example. Just a couple of meetings ago. Food trucks, and those were, those were renewals of licenses. We can't do it half-hersely because what developers will do is they'll say, look, I'm not going to go on Dearborn Heights too unstained. It's got to be backed up by data. Now, if we want to continue the moratorium on, you know, used car lots, include car washes, you know, we can do that. We can ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance today.
I'm so sorry to pause you for a second. Our city, and I'm not, and I'm not saying this in any way, but there is a vacancy at this current time because this council has not approved for new city attorney. Because the majority has not done that.
You cannot change by resolution the charter, okay?
Again, nothing-
And I've had six lawyers look at it.
Let's not get off on a tangent over this council.
So I don't, I want to make you clear. We refer to him as Roger.
I can draft a proposed ordinance and we can include what we want to include. But, but it's got to be backed up by data and, and an example is, so the food truck is, food trucks are new things. And a lot of people are favorable. I worry about existing businesses. But do I, do I have any data? Do I know? Do they interfere with existing businesses or not? I don't know that. Get an expert to study that and let me know that. How many collision shops do we have? Do we have too many? I have no idea. I have no idea. So we, we-
That's what I'm saying.
But Councilman-
I wasn't, I wasn't done. I wasn't done. I wasn't done, sorry.
Hey, smile. We're not, we're not-
Okay, but I wasn't done. I waited till everybody spoke. I'm going to continue to speak.
Okay, hold on for a second.
So when you, hold on.
Just Councilman, one second. Hold on. Smile. I actually, you've finished.
No, I didn't. He, he popped in. I didn't finish.
No, I let him speak before that.
I was talking about how I would pay for doors and then you had dropped in and cut me off.
Hold on, hold on. You actually finished. I went over to Councilman Conson and I told Councilman Ahmad's next after him.
But I wasn't done.
But you gave him the floor to speak.
No.
You did.
I didn't.
You stopped talking, you let him speak. But we're not going to argue back and forth on this. Just let him, go ahead and you're, you're next. It's not this serious.
It is.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. I mean, looking at it like-
Thank you, Council Chair, I mean, looking at it, like Councilman Constan said, I was looking, I wanna put a limit on those businesses, all I'm saying, I need data, who's in the city can tell me how many car washes do we have, how many gas stations do we have? I mean, you mentioned oil changes, are we gonna add, add oil changes? There's still a little bit, repair shop, or like auto, auto service, are we gonna add oil changes? What about maybe tin shops? What about anything that, maybe batteries, or whatever? So that's what I'm saying, who's in the city, what department, ordinance? That's what I'm saying.
Councilman, you said, you said.
Building, egg.
Madam Clerk, what do you want to come up with, like, what kind of business do we have in the city right now, from, from your record? Like, how many gas stations, how many?
Well, you can only if they come to us.
No, no, whatever you have right now.
I don't have anything right now.
No, no, I mean, whatever you have in the system. Like, who's in the city, what department is able to tell me?
Well, it'd be the building department, then it would have granted it, what if they didn't come to us to even obtain that license?
You're telling me the building department can tell me how many auto repair shops we have, how many oil changes, how many dealership?
Because they would have had to go through the process.
That's what I'm looking for.
Of course.
For, for this moratorium, for section one, I'm just looking for data, Council Chair. Section two, which is inspection on license renewals, this is, needs to go into effect right away. This is, needs to be an ordinance right away. This is, I love this, this is, needs to be implemented. This is what's gonna help a lot. But for section one, that's all I'm asking for, just some data, I'm not gonna wait for business owners to come and tell me how many businesses we have in the city, I need those information from the city itself.
Councilman Sab?
Thank you. In order to get data, you put a hold on it and can, can, and conduct data. You don't just let, continue business coming in from the city.
Councilman, I'm saying, I need the data before I make my decision to vote on this. That's what I'm saying.
This is a hold.
I just need some, I just need data from the city, I'm not saying about the master plan, all I'm saying, just give me some numbers.
I guarantee you, I guarantee you, a quarter, maybe thirty percent of the city, and the clerk can attest to this, licenses have not been renewed.
Okay, let's call it a hundred percent.
But, but, so how are you gonna get that data, corrupt?
There's a lot, but I know ordinance has been on, they've been going throughout the city, too.
You know, like, I, I just wanna give you a quick example, like, when I do mortgages, there's this, uh, thing called Link, Councilman, if this is okay, it automatically auto fires every one-year anniversary. It's like, do we not have, like, can we get, like, some type of system that auto fires, hey, your renewal time is up? And if they don't renew it, I mean, we gotta, we gotta get with the twenty-first century, guys, and, and this is crazy. If we got the, you know what's crazy?
Yeah, oh, for, we do send out renewals three months before for business licenses.
Do we email them, do we call them, do we follow up with them?
We, they, they, they get the renewal notice three months before, and then I think it's like a week or two after they get a reminder that you have not renewed your license. Council Chair? Council Chair, I did find on that, Van Born, two-two-one-two-oh, Van Born, there's a Heights hand wash there, as well as Auto Mania. Um, Auto Mania's first license was issued in twenty eighteen, and the Heights hand wash in twenty seventeen.
I wasn't even on council, Councilman.
So that was prior to the moratorium, too.
But I don't need an apology, it's okay.
And then as far as, um, um, I believe there's an assistant corp council that, back when we had Seacrest Wardle, and I think O'Reilly Rensilio does the same thing, they typically do all the, the ordinances for planning.
I wasn't on council.
You were not on council, no, for.
For the record, Councilman, once I was not on council, I got, I got a memory like another.
They got the license, so they came in.
And by the way, that was approved in two thousand and eighteen, she said.
The first one was, the first one.
And the other one was two thousand and seventeen, moratorium didn't go into effect until twelve, ten of two thousand and nineteen.
Well, what happened is, they were, got the license, then they came to us and wanted to be a used car lot, because they, you get, they got the license for a detail shop in two thousand and eighteen.
She's saying that you're just, you're wrong.
No, twenty seventeen, the hand wash first business license, because we have two licenses at the end. The first one was in twenty seventeen.
I just turned off the microphone. Twenty seventeen was for, it was issued to Heights Hand Wash, there's still currently two there. The second one was to Auto Mania, and that was in twenty eighteen.
What month, twenty eighteen? Did you say?
Councilman Sab, go ahead. You done?
Is Auto Mania considered a used car lot?
Yeah?
Yeah.
I'm telling you guys, I, I know, I've, I've read Suzanne's things on, 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 on her Instagram page or Facebook page for many years, so coming on council, I know that I've only made one vote on used cars. And the only reason why that one vote was made was because somebody purchased it for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars under the impression that they have, they have this license. And so to me, I said, this person's coming to invest in Dearborn Heights, and they've already paid this hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the person that sold it to them may have known what they were doing, but here is this innocent man that's coming before Dearborn Heights and, and, and put his life savings to say, I wanna work in Dearborn Heights, I'm, I'm buying something that's already been one.
The old Donovan Post. The old Donovan Post.
Yes.
Council Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm just Googling some stuff here, I Googled, like, collision shops, we have four in the city. Uh, scrap yards, we don't have, we have none, according to Google, I'm not sure if we have any. Uh, so, that's what I'm saying, I, I wish maybe the building department can give us some numbers. And, uh, let's move on with this, let's move on to section two and make sure that's in effect right away. And I guess, most likely, Councilman Sab is bringing this to the next meeting to vote on it.
Correct.
I mean, we're gonna keep talking back and forth, we have no data, and everybody wants to move some businesses, keep some businesses, it's just too much.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Did we also discuss a study session where the public could have input?
Guys, hang on, one second, one second. Councilwoman speaking.
Yeah, did we discuss a study session so we could have input from the residents? At one time? We were talking about that.
This is the study session.
Yeah, but the residents didn't know about it.
Yeah, they did, we published this, didn't we? Yeah, uh, this was published.
All right.
I mean, it was talked on Tuesday, Councilman wanted a study session as soon as possible, and so here we are. And it was published in twenty-four hours before, like the ordinance forces us to do. Um, any other council members? Anything from the public? Did Mr. Abdul Hack leave?
Come on, Tanya.
Tanya Sterling, West Brookside, Dearborn Heights. Um, I appreciate you bringing this up, um, because I do think there needs to be a moratorium, I feel like we have used car lots going down Van Born between, at least from where I see it, Telegraph, De Pelham, and there's so many, I thought that was stopped, even, we see it across Taylor. So I have an issue with that. Uh, gas stations, if I'm not mistaken, I thought Mr. Deeb had said that people come to our city because we have, um, lower, um, ordinance, whatnot, because, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it wasn't you. I thought we talked about in E Course Creek meeting, that other cities are harder to get licenses and get gas stations in versus ours is a little bit lenient? Then that wasn't you, that was someone else, okay, apologize. So, um, I'm, I appreciate you doing this, I really am, thank you, I hope it goes through, thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
Joseph Dowell, Dearborn Heights, Eaton Street. Now, I think, uh, Mr. Deeb is an assistant. And for, and maybe a, uh, city planner, to help him out with, uh, the great plan. Now, the licensing and, uh, the ordinance, I think you guys need to work on it. Just to, maybe set the moratorium on hold off on new licenses, and then maybe set a, think of how many licenses do you actually need after you get all that data with, with the city planner, or with Mr. Deeb when he has time. So, the data does, I mean, I looked up at gas stations, you have about twenty-eight gas stations, give or take? About twenty?
Dearborn Heights?
Yeah.
I just counted eleven.
Eleven?
That's Dearborn Heights I'm talking, I'm not talking Dearborn, I didn't say that with Taylor.
But, yeah, I mean, it hit all the edges, too, so.
I mean, I'm just looking.
Like, like the corner streets and all that other stuff, but, yeah. But, um, there, there are. Maybe twelve, thirteen.
I can name you eleven on Joy. Telegraph.
BP, Warren. Outer Drive and Warren.
Yeah, Outer Drive.
There, there's more than eleven.
Angster, Joy, the.
BP, Narrows.
I, I'm just saying, all I'm saying, like, we cannot just pick and choose.
Twenty-eight sounds more realistic, but.
Okay.
Give or take, I mean.
We have a lot of them.
I, I, I was counting Redford, you know, Tele, Telegraph, you know, all those little.
Well, no, I'm not counting any of those, but, but, I mean, it's here nor there.
Other thing is, like I said, licensing, there's probably some people that, that being honest, that's, there's some lost money there, so make sure ordinance is, is checking up on everybody. Do all that stuff, I mean, make your temporary vote, I mean, this, what's it, um, moratorium? Or hold on these license, and then work on the details of getting a exactly plan of getting a zoning down, and say, hey, we only need this many for right now, until we hit a certain population. Unfortunately, we're landlocked, this city's not gonna grow very much. And, so we're not gonna have industrial, we might have light industrial, we might have some warehousing, but not logistics, we don't have, we don't have the land. I see restaurants, potentially. I also see, uh, movie theater, and maybe some other little, little things here and there.
A movie theater shut down, it was only a dollar.
I know, so, so, so there's a couple of ones, but, I mean, it's, it's, there's potential to bring it back. Maybe outdoor movie theater.
There you go.
Suzanne Todd, Academy Street, South Dearborn Heights. Van Born Road looks like a junk road. We even have our own massage parlor on Van Born Road in Dearborn Heights. Something has to be done, they're talking about making up a, a path that people can walk and everything. How are they gonna walk, what are they gonna look at? Used cars, massage parlor. I, I think there has to be a moratorium or something to stop these businesses from coming in and junking up, I, I don't know about the other streets like Warren or Ford Road or any of them, but definitely, something has to be stopped, Van Born Road looks terrible, I wouldn't walk down there anyways. We have two restaurants on Dearborn Heights side, Van Born Road. And that's it. Now, who's gonna stroll and look at gas stations? Look at used car lots that, uh, detailing places? Nobody, so, yeah, there has to be something to stop, whether it's a moratorium, something temporarily until the city plan can be maintained.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Uh, real quick, before you start, do you wanna say something, Councilman?
Yeah, I just wanna say, ma'am, this moratorium does not even affect Van Born, because Van Born overlay has its own ordinance that one we passed a couple of months ago, so this is for the rest of the city.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, okay.
That's what, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, like, I mean, I, I'm not against this or with it, I just, I need data. I need people to come here and tell me, Councilman, this is exactly what we have, this is exactly what we need, this is exactly what we don't need. I mean, I can probably, we have a lot of barber shops, or maybe pizzerias, or whatever, you know, I mean, that's all I'm saying. Just give me some data so I can work with, but, yeah, the.
I agree with that.
That's all I'm, that's what we're all saying, uh, but, thank you very much.
I agree, by the way, you, I mean, you make a good point.
Yeah, like, you said gas station, why not oil, I wanna add oil changes, for example, can I add oil changes to that?
Do you have an oil change?
That's what I'm saying, I don't know, I don't know, so.
Really, is there an orange, oil, yeah, there is, no, that's Dearborn.
Yeah, Ford Road, so.
Where?
So I was hoping this evening, Council Chair, that I'll come here, they'll tell me, you know what, Councilman, we have some amount of gas stations, some amount of, uh, car dealerships, some amount of whatever, and, you know, and from that, from looking at the data, I would be like, okay, let's move on, let's go on all, maybe add more businesses, take off some businesses, that's all I was saying.
Council Chair, I appreciate the conversation that's going on, I just want to give you input as a developer, a property owner.
Guys, nothing from the audience, please.
Since, since the moratorium, if it goes in place, as, as a purchaser, let's say I'm buying something from out of state, I'm unaware of the moratorium. Um, and I hire somebody to go into the city, and the city says in the application process that there's a stay on issuing those applications, then that property that I have under contract, I can get my money back, no harm done. So the moratorium is, is really oblivious to the outsiders. So to have, and you can ask corporate counsel, a stay on applications makes sense. But when you stay permits or licenses, then you're opening yourself up to litigation, and I, I, I think that this is something, moratoriums are a stay on applications only. This way, there's no harm done to the buyer. Ninety percent, he's got due diligence, he goes and he finds out, the clerk says, I'm sorry, there's a stay on issuing permits, and he goes back and gets his deposit. But permits and licensing, then you're opening yourself up to litigation.
Thank you. I just have a question for, so you're, you're saying.
Mr. Hakeem, I think they got a question for you, so if you wanna answer to the Councilman.
Mr. Fakuri, you're saying a moratorium on granting new, uh, taking new applications and granting new permits?
No, just taking new applications, and corporate counsel can speak to this better. Taking new applications, there's no harm done, the applicant comes, and he's told at the counter that we're not allowing applications for that use right now, no problem. But if somebody has an application in place, and I know that you say that there's something in the queue, there, it's, there is, it opens the city to, to litigation, outside parties can sue, there's a lot of issues, but if there's a stay in applications, then there is no legal issues.
So you're saying, if there's, what you're saying is, put a moratorium to say, if you have something in, in place, or like an application in place, you're saying hold off, we're not allowing you to do anything right now while this moratorium is in place?
If you have an application, and, and, and it's been approved, you're in queue, then it doesn't affect you. Yeah.
Makes sense, thank you. Uh, we have, uh, two, anyone else in the audience? We got two on Zoom, I'm gonna start off with Margaret King. Even though I said your name, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on, Madam Flur, George, you are muted, thank you. Go ahead, Margaret.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, I would just like to say, I know that this is for all of Dearborn Heights, as Hassan Ahmad said. Um, but Van Born, because I live on it, something needs to be done with that, there's Tonda Rose that's just been sitting vacant for so long. Um, and the rest of the city as well, with the car washes and everything, I would hope that this goes through, I like this idea, Mr. Sab. Um, but yeah, that's just my input, something needs to happen, I would like, you know, give a chance to have boutiques or something else to come to the city to get outside people into our city, so we can make money.
I think, I think what I'd like to say is, Mr. Fakuri probably developed the wrong side of Dearborn, he should have developed Dearborn Heights. I don't know if you guys know that, but Mr. Fakuri actually was the developer and business owner across all of West Dearborn. So what you see in West Dearborn today was actually started twenty years ago from Mr. Fakuri. Uh, and now you're seeing the thriving of, of his fruits, so, uh, that's something that I just wanted to recognize, Mr. Fakuri, on, really. As I'm eating at the Great Common every morning, I'm like, whoa, this, this wasn't here ten, fifteen years ago.
That's, that's.
Well, I mean. Well, I'm gonna try and.
I think he has the one down the street, correct, that are right?
I'm talking about the actual development, though, all this started because he began to invest, he began to say.
He had the dream.
He had the dream, they call him.
And the vision.
Hakeem the Dreamer. All right, next up, we have, uh, national public activist, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street you live on. Uh, I like to see that great smile, we haven't heard from the national.
Hey, what's going on, Mr. Chair? Sonny Young.
Yeah, we got it. Yeah, we got it.
Got it. So the moratorium, you're gonna, you guys are trying to put, here's the problem. Uh, when's the last time that the city go check everybody's licensing? That's, that's the thing that you guys are supposed to look at, when is the last time? And when you wanna put this into effect, you gotta put the main concerns are automotive industry things, that's the problem. Now restaurants, that can be approved, something small like the person said, tho- those will be approved, but anything that, like, the car washes, there's so many of them. And a lot of things, you guys have to understand is, like Mr., uh, Fakuri said, that, uh, lawsuits. The lawsuits are one of the worst things you can possibly have, because if you put that into effect, it can cause a lot of litigation, you must sit there and put, if there's any applicants, like say if somebody wants to lease a place, the guy's grandfathered in, somebody else wants to lease it, you have to put in detail that you can, it can be renewed to somebody else, not just canceled, grandfathered in.
It says that, a public activist.
Oh, it does?
It does, did you read it?
No, I haven't read it, you know, I haven't been to the city council meetings. I've been doing something else. What's going on with you, Mr. Baydun?
How much, buddy, how you doing, is this what you wanna use your time for, cause you have a minute and twenty-five seconds?
Oh, I got a minute and twenty-five seconds, yeah, I'm gonna use my time wisely. Uh, are you calculating my time, because you spoke and I, you owe me thirty seconds. So like I told everybody, that you guys are supposed to go look at these businesses, see if they have licensing. Have somebody just to go over and look at the business, and these people that have the trucks, the food trucks, there has to be a designated spot for these people, it's terrible, man, every time you go there, it's very sickening, what I see. So, to all the city council members, please, make a good resolution and make sure to, uh, make Dearborn Heights great again, all right?
You, you done?
Are you done? Are you serious, man, you want me to finish, don't you, you wanna go home, don't you?
No.
Yeah, seeing your beautiful son on Zoom.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Yeah, bye bye. Anyone else? All right, Councilman Sab's resolution, uh, study session is, uh, completed. Have a good night, guys.